Good evening. Today is Thursday, October 19th, 2023. And welcome to the regular meeting session of the Milford School Committee. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV. And copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through central. Thank you everyone for being here tonight. Our first agenda item is the approval of minutes. These are the regular session minutes from October 5th, 2023. They were included in the packet. Any comments or questions on that? Not seeing so looking for a motion to approve the October 5th regular session minutes. Motion by Michael, second by Robin, then in favor and that is unanimous. Okay. Okay. You all set on please see your. And then moving along to announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Any committee members have anything they'd like to share? Dr. McIntyre, anything on you?
I am all set.
Your side, alright. And then from my side, just quickly want to update the board. Article 31 and Article 37 were unanimously supported by FinCom last night. So we appreciate FinCom's support and look forward to our presentation at town meeting for those articles. Moving on to invitation to speak. Assuming nobody else is here for invitation to speak. So we're getting that to prime. Alright, so fourth agenda item then is our NEAS update. Principal Ott.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to join the committee today. Dr. McIntyre, I know that the committee was seeking an update on our NEAS accreditation process. And so I'd like to try to walk you through that and answer any questions that you may have. For those of you who are not familiar, I think a little bit of context might be helpful. NEAS is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. High schools in New England who are members of NEAS or alongside member of NEAS go through a reaccreditation process that happens once every decade. And the concept is pretty simple. The faculty of the school, the students who wish to participate, and community members and families who wish to participate take part in what's called a self-study. Where the school looks at itself against a rubric that NEAS has created with its standards and provides a report to both the accreditation team and the broader community about areas of strength and areas that the that the school communities identify that needs improvement. There's there a visiting team that comes to the school typically for a two-day visit. And that visiting team is made up of teachers and administrators from the NEAS member schools from all around New England. They visit the school for two days and they pour over a huge sum of documents and they talk to lots of different school community members in both one-on-one settings and group settings. And they produce a final accreditation report. And that accreditation report has both commendations and recommendations. And it's part of the agreement that the school has as a NEAS member is that the school's then going to work over the ensuing decade to enact those recommendations and to provide periodic updates to NEAS on this process in trying to fulfill those recommendations. So the last self-study that Milford High School completed was in March of 2016. In April of 2016, there was a visiting team that completed a NEAS accreditation visit. The school was accredited at that time. It was formally accredited in February of 2017 when NEAS provided their accreditation report, which then made a number of commendations and recommendations. For reference, I joined the school as principal in July of 2017. So I did not have the opportunity to participate in either the self-study or the site visit that happened in April of 2016. I provided NEAS with a five-year report in March of 2021. I think it's noteworthy that that was approximately 12 months after we closed school in March of 2020 through the pandemic. They provided a response approximately nine months later, in December of 2021, where they provided both affirmations of many of the things that we reported in the five-year report and identified three areas in which they expected us to continue to work on in the coming years. They asked me to submit a special report in January of 2023, which I did. And Dr. McIntyre asked me to come before the committee to provide a NEAS update. Kind of jogged my memory. I said, I have not heard back from them since I submitted that special report in January of 2023. So I reached out to our contacts at NEAS and they let me know that they would be providing feedback, but I should now expect to receive it prior to December of 2023. So almost an 11-month gap between the submission of the special report and their feedback. I'm not sure why that is the case, but we will wait patiently for NEAS feedback in December of 2023. Because of the pandemic, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges put essentially like a two-year pause on the regular decennial cycle. So while we were originally slated to have our next decennial visit in the spring of 2016, NEAS informed us that the next decennial visit will happen at some point in the 2028 calendar year. They've not identified whether that would be in the first or second half of 2028. And they've let us know that at some point in the spring of 2025, we will be invited to attend an accreditation informational meeting with NEAS. The standards that we will be expected to use in our self-study, which will start at some point in 2026, will be a different set of standards than that which was used in 2016. And I believe that the self-study process and the accreditation visit process has been modified since 2016 as well. I'm not familiar with the updated standard, nor am I familiar with the updated procedures for the self-study and the accreditation visit. I'm sure it will become very knowledgeable in the spring of 2025 when we attend the informational meeting. But until then, you know, we're not going to be worried about that 2028 accreditation visit. We're going to be focused on our school improvement plan. We're going to be focused on moving forward on the recommendations that we will get in December of 2023. At this stage, I'm somewhat reluctant to begin to invest in significant time and energy on items we discussed in the special report before NEAS provides us with feedback in December of 2023. I prefer to have that feedback this evening, but I don't. The last part that I would add, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, is it's customary and it's considered good practice in the years preceding a decennial visit for members of the school administration and members of the faculty to serve on accreditation teams in other schools so they become personally familiar with the process and so they can therefore implement that process well at their old, at their, at their home school. So I expect that in FY '26 and FY '27 and perhaps in the first half of FY '28, that we will have many members of our faculty and administrative team serve on accreditation teams that visit schools all over New England. And it's through that process of having members of our faculty and administrative team serve on accreditation teams that I think will really internalize the standards, internalize the process, and be able to execute that here when we complete our own self-study in the coming years. So let me pause there and I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions that you may have or speak to any specific concerns that you have regarding the process and our place in it.
Excellent. Thank you. Open up two questions. Go ahead, Ren.
Yeah, thank you for that overview. What is the commitment for the faculty and staff for the accreditation process, like prior to, when they're going to visit other schools and go to that process? Like what is it like? I mean, it seems like that's pretty intensive.
Yes, for most people, so most members of our faculty will not go out and visit another school on an accreditation team. It'll be, you know, I, my goal would be that in FY '26, FY '27, and FY '28, between our administrators and our faculty members, that we get somewhere between 15 to 20 people out to serve on teams. So we've got a core group here internally who's very familiar with the process. In, if the, although I know that the process is modified from where it was, I have participated in NEAS accreditation in my previous positions at Hudson Public Schools. And I think that the, I think the basic process is more or less the same. And what will happen is probably starting in the fall of 2026 and go through all of 2027, in the first half of 2028, every member of our faculty is going to be assigned to a committee. And so this process of the self-study is going to be divided up into committee work. There'll be a steering committee, which will sort of organize the activity of all the other subcommittees. And there'll be subcommittees and each one will be focused on one of the NEAS standards. And they'll be tasked with completing sort of a self-review of our performance relative to the standards. And that, you know, that review will include everything from conducting interviews to doing documentary reviews, class observations, and then drafting a report for their committee. And that committee report will ultimately be organized by the steering committee into the final self-study report. So everyone on the faculty will have a hand in the self-study, right? Some folks will play a more intensive role in the process because they will participate in site visits. Other schools, I, forgive me, I should have mentioned earlier, typically the faculty members that go out and serve on accreditation teams that visit other schools subsequently serve as committee chairs back in their own schools, right? Because you want your committee chairs to be the most knowledgeable with the process. So some members of our faculty will play a more intensive role. Those will be the people that go and serve on accreditation teams and then come back and serve as committee chairs. But everyone on the faculty, particularly in FY '27, is going to, they're going to dedicate substantial professional development time to self-study and drafting of their committee reports. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. Thank you. Other questions?
And Dr. McIntyre, Dr. Consigly, maybe you can speak to this better than I can. I do believe that the school committee, that many school committee members will also be involved in NEAS accreditation as well. I don't feel confident that I can speak specifically of what that role will be, but it is my understanding that school committee members will play a direct role in the accreditation process.
There's typically at least interviewing.
Interviews.
Historically, I believe. And the word that NEAS has been bantering about over the last like five to six years is streamlining. I don't know if that's true or not.
I think we'll find out in, you know, in the spring of 2025, when we begin NEAS information session, whether or not it has been streamlined. I can't say I haven't participated in two accreditations. Those processes were very, very heavy loss. And one of the criticisms that I think NEAS has tried to respond to, and tell you in a couple of years how hard they've done, is that virtually all other initiatives need to stop at a high school during the process of the self-study. So if you're working on that, you know, if you work on a number of different, you know, initiatives to improve curriculum or instruction or assessments or student support, it's very hard to sustain momentum, all of those initiatives, while you're going through the self-study. Most activity, at least in the past, had to stop in order to make the space to complete the self-study. I do hope that the process is streamlined going forward so that you can both engage in the self-study while, you know, stay in the course with other multi-year initiatives that you, that will weather up.
Basic question that I would have too, for listening audience, what is the, what's the purpose and why do we want the accreditation?
So that's also been a topic of a lot of debate within our profession over the last 10 to 15 years in particular. There was a time, I would say, you know, going back as recently as the late 90s, when members of the general public could not get a whole lot of data on what was going on in schools. Today in 2023, it's, we're in a fundamentally different place. There's a very high level of transparency about virtually everything that happens in schools, from fiscal management to curriculum, instruction assessment, student learning outcomes, discipline attendance. Prior to this sort of more contemporary era of sort of public transparency in schools, I think the theory behind NEAS was that schools could not be simply left to their own devices to ensure that students were having a quality experience and that there needed to be some external accountability and oversight to ensure that schools were meeting minimum standards. And NEAS, I believe historically, and Dr. McIntyre, Dr. Consigly, you might know differently than me, I believe that the origins of the NEAS accreditation process came from New England area of colleges who sought assurance that high schools in New England were meeting certain standards. And essentially that they could trust that a transcript from NEAS required in high school was a reliable measure of student learning and student achievement, and they could use those transcripts reliably in the selective admissions process at those schools. There was a, something of a revolt amongst Massachusetts public school districts that was led by members of very high-income districts in the early 2010s against NEAS. The process, many schools were protesting that the process was sort of duplicative at that stage and redundant of, you know, what was going on with, you know, that was happening alongside a number of different sort of public reviews being led by DESI. Many of you on the school community have been part of sort of recording program reviews and tiered focus monitoring reviews. And so the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does all sorts of external monitoring and oversight and accountability for districts that goes above and beyond annual reporting requirements. And it's, it's, I, not clear to me that colleges are particularly concerned that a school is accredited by NEAS today in order to validate the transcript. Colleges are looking at AP exam results, they're looking at SAT results, ACT results, they're cross-referencing some of those again, sort of GPAs from high schools to ensure that sort of the measures are valid. So I think today, like the primary purpose of NEAS accreditation, as I see it, where I think the value is, is in the self-study and a peer review process, right? Where colleagues from outside of the district are coming in as sort of critical friends to look at our self-study and to, you know, give us some feedback on that. But I think there's a lot of value in our faculty and our school community periodically taking a look at ourselves and saying, listen, how are we doing, right? And not just asking that question, how are we doing in general, but how are we doing relative to some reasonable standards, right? And, you know, my hope is that it is going to be purposeful for it, for us today. It is going to help us, you know, look at ourselves more clearly and more honestly. It's going to support sort of the process of continuous improvement and that we can do so in a manner that's not going to force us to put the brakes on improvement work whereas instead get a compliment and support improvement work. But frankly, that remains to be seen.
Well, thank you for that. No, I appreciate it. I mean, as I said, it's, there's a lot to it. So it's, it's the, that return on investment, right? And as you're stating, that return on investment really is in that self-evaluation aspect from your side too. And as, you know, the, it is still important that we're preparing our students for their time beyond graduation day.
I think, and I think the key, and, you know, it's going to be up to, you know, it's going to be up to everyone who's working here at that point in time is if we approach it as a exercise in compliance, it will be an exercise in compliance. If we approach it as like a genuine opportunity to kind of look at ourselves seriously and critically, then I think something that can help them.
Any other questions? Yes, Rob.
So I'm not an expert on NEAS by any means, but just looking at their website quickly, and this is more probably a question for Dr. Consigly as opposed to Mr. Ottland, but would there be, what would be the cost benefit if we wanted to look at doing district-wide accreditation as opposed to just?
I can actually, we did that previously. And I don't think the choose was worth the squeeze on it. I don't think they were as well-developed at the KDA level. When, when Dr. Tremblay was here, I think NEAS had a more prominent place educationally for public education. We did that. We ended up kind of shifting away from that about, I don't know, how long ago was that?
10 years.
At least 10 years. At least 10 years ago.
But I think Principal Ottland highlighted the fact that everything that you're doing comes to a grinding halt. So for two, three years, everything stops because everybody's working on just self-study. So it's, it, it was, having gone through it at Stacy, having gone through it at Woodland, it was, it's just frustrating to just sit and study and have everybody doing different committees and not being able to move forward. It's just not worth it, honestly.
And it, we, it just kept the central office engaged on a constant cycle.
I just didn't know if we were doing it as a whole district, if then, I don't, it probably wouldn't, but if it would take any of the pressure off the high school because people have already been doing it, if we already had data for years, it, it wouldn't make anything easier at that level?
The process was a little different at each level.
Okay.
But also, all the, we're already doing so many reviews every year. Every year, there's some, DESI's sending us something. I don't know, I just think it, it creates more work where, like Josh said, it's not, it's not necessary.
Okay.
Excellent. Any other questions on NEAS? I'm not seeing any. So thank you for that report and then on to the next, which is our vending machine allocation.
So is the, committee members likely know we have vending machines in the school and revenues that are generated in the vending machines? There's a, there's profit sharing between the vendor and the school department and any expenditures of vending monies need to be approved by the school committee. And so I am, the, the first part of my request today is about the vending revenues. And then bundled with this is also sort of a complimentary request regarding transfers within our student activities account. So I'm sorry if that's not listed in the, in the header, but I believe you did receive the letter outlining the requests. So the request is that we have a balance of just under $1,600, $1,598.18 in vending revenue at the end of FY '23. And my request is that we transfer that into the yearbook student activities account. And I'd like to talk about the transfer request as well, which I'm also requesting for transfer into the yearbook account. And I'll explain why I'm asking for the vending revenue and these transfers into the yearbook account. So in addition to the transfer of the vending balance and requesting that we make two transfers from dormant student activities accounts. So dormant student activities accounts are student activity accounts that have had no deposits or withdrawals for at least three fiscal years. So one of these accounts is our global citizenship account. It has a dormant balance of $2,945.40. And the second is a hospitality and tourism management student activities account with a balance of $2,290.75. Those are one-time transfers. I'm also asking for the committee to accept a request for an annual transfer of $3,500 from the Hawksnest student activities account to the yearbook student activities account. I should note that the Hawksnest student activities account is not a dormant account, is currently carrying a positive balance of over $25,000. This is our school store. It sells school merchandise. Every year, we have withdrawals from the account to purchase new merchandise. And there's a markup on the merchandise. And so we sell a lot of merchandise in the store. And so every year, revenue exceeds expenses. And so the balance in that line has been agreeing from year to year to a very large positive balance of $25,000. We're not looking to deplete that. We know that we need to maintain a substantial positive balance in order to replenish inventory on an annual basis, but we do not believe it's necessary to carry a balance of $25,000. So the reason for asking for all of these transfers into the yearbook is in order to try to make the yearbook priced at a point that is accessible for our students and families. Yearbooks are typically priced somewhere between $90 to $120. And given that presently 60% of students at Milford High School qualify for free or reduced lunch, which is our standard measure of poverty, we fear that that price point is not suitable to ensure broad access to the yearbook. By making these transfers, we think it's going to be a very positive step to trying to at least hold costs steady against inflationary pressure and hopefully to gradually bring costs down over time. Bringing costs down over time is also going to require us to, I think, pull back on some elements of the yearbook design that are maybe nice to have, that aren't really critical to have. And I think that between these two groups, you know, transferring funds from vending, transferring funds from dormant accounts, the annual transfer from the Hawksnest, and more conservative fiscal management of the price of the yearbook, I hope that we can get the price point down. I, my target is I'd like to try and get it down below $80 per student. Even at $80, it's not going to be accessible to 100% of our graduating seniors, but I think it's going to be a step in the right direction. And lastly, I'd like to add that I anticipate that I will regularly be returning to the committee asking for just, for transfers from the vending budget into the yearbook budget. I don't see this as sort of a one-time sort of transaction that's going to get us where we need to be. And so that's also why I'm asking for an annual transfer of $3,500 from the Hawksnest because I think there's going to be ongoing need in order to try to manage the cost for us to this.
Any questions in regards to these transfers? Go ahead.
Just a couple of quick questions. Are, so the two student accounts, the global citizenship student account and the hospitality tourism management, are those active clubs still or?
They're not.
Okay. So there's not even, just nothing is happening there, so?
Correct, yeah. So sometimes, and thank you for asking a clarifying question, sometimes we do have active clubs that for a variety of reasons have not had any deposits or withdrawals for three years, but in these cases, these are not active student organizations.
And then my second question was just, how did you come up with the number 3,500 from the Hawksnest?
So that was a number that Assistant Superintendent Perry and I discussed the other day. We think that, given what we've seen with regards to deposits and withdrawals from the Hawksnest in recent years, we believe that a $3,500 annual transfer is going to have no discernible impact on operations of the Hawksnest.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Oh, yeah, just a comment. I think, I love the idea of making things more accessible to kids. This is a great initiative that you've taken on, a way to, to bridge that gap. So kudos to you and the team for figuring that out. And, I mean, I certainly support it.
Well, I will give credit where it is due. As in, meeting with Kathy the other day, as we're thinking about this large Hawksnest balance, it came on the heels of a recent conversation about trying to control costs in yearbook. Kathy said, hey, like, this is meaningful way that we can, this is student money, right? Like the monies that come into the Hawksnest come from our students. And just kind of like recycling these monies in a way. So thanks to Kathy for sort of seeing this as an opportunity to help us reduce the yearbook prices for our students.
Now, Josh, is the idea to try to, you know, right now, there's, there's already a price established for the yearbook, is the hope that with some of this money, that certain, you know, students would be able to apply to get a yearbook for free, you know?
So, so we do not have any formal mechanisms right now by which we select which students are eligible, eligible for sort of free yearbooks. And to the best of my knowledge, and I, I can't say this with total confidence, I do not believe we've been distributing free yearbooks to any students during my time. You know, the yearbooks are funded entirely by student fees, right? We don't use taxpayer dollars to fund the yearbook. And so if we're going to provide free yearbooks, it's going to be the class itself that's going to be choosing to make some yearbooks available for free. But it's important to note, and this is a, is a little bit confusing, the class and the yearbook are two separate student activities groups, right? So for example, the class officers in the class of 2024 do not make fiscal decisions for yearbook. It is the editor of the yearbook under the supervision of the yearbook advisors with the other yearbook officers who decide how that money is going to be dispersed. Theoretically, we could get to a point where we can carry a positive balance in the yearbook from year to year. Yearbook might be in a position where they could come up with a process by which some of yearbooks can be distributed for free or at a reduced price. We are not there right now in FY '23. Hopefully with these transfers, improved fiscal management, we can get there in the future. I would love to have a mechanism by which students who are facing severe economic hardship could be offered a chance to purchase a yearbook at a drastically reduced price point or maybe for free. I do anticipate we're going to be able to do that with the class of 2024, unfortunately.
Yeah, because I was curious with, with these transfers, you know, does it, does this transfer help maintain what is necessary to put out the yearbook that, you know, they've done for the past years? Or are they in a, in a hole right now where they're going to have to change up?
We need to do two things concurrently, right? We need to both increase revenue and decrease expenses. These transfers are going to help us increase revenue, but that needs to be complemented by, by moves to decrease expenses. So if we maintain the current level of expense, I don't think, I, I don't think it's going to be fiscally solvable. We're just not in a position where we, you know, we can't sell 250 yearbooks at $150 a pop. It's not going to happen in Milford High School 2024. It's not going to happen in '26. It's not going to happen in '28, right? So we need to have both increased revenues and decreased expenses.
I appreciate that. Any other questions? I was hoping Michael was going to be back in time for a vote because obviously we need to.
I think we have four.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to probably recuse myself just because my daughter is on the yearbook staff. So just from that standpoint.
I can ask more questions.
Yeah.
How many pages on my book?
Just from that standpoint, and I just think it's in, you know, that's interesting because money's going into the account that she is going to be utilizing as a staff member on that. So that's why I was hoping Michael would be back. So I'm going to have, actually then, so let's, yeah, we'll revisit that. We're going to table this. We'll move on to our, our MHS graduation impact and concerns with the new turf field. So we'll move on to that agenda item right now. So we'll move on to that agenda item right now. I know Brendan, that was something that you had brought up, so I'll look over to you with any quick questions first.
Yeah.
Josh, you already have something prepared to talk about.
Awesome, yeah. So just from my experience, from my high school, when we redid our turf and track, we had to drastically change our graduations ceremony. The chairs had to be moved from the turf to the track surface because of the weight distribution of the actual visual posts of the chairs digging into the turf would void the warranty. Milford, I think, does a really great thing with having a nice big screen TV. I don't know if that truck can now go over the new track and be on the turf for X amount of hours without voiding the warranty that we just invested a million dollars in. So those are my bigger concerns of just layout, what do we need to modify so that way we don't get to main, say, oh, we need to ask these questions or modify something next. That's my concern.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'm going to jump in on that one. So right now, there's no concerns related to graduation in the new turf field. Our athletic director, Pete Boucher, and school administration have been in conversations with the installation company about safeguards for the stage and other equipment used to graduation. And we're still waiting on a couple of clarifications, but they're basically giving us best practices for ways to maintain the warranty, you know, make, ensure the life of the track in the field.
Yep.
And they still have, you know, the graduation experience if anything, if anything changes based on those conversations. Myself or Kim Valon will update the committee, but right now it looks like we're the one that's forward based on the conversations with that director with the company. I've learned more about track and turf installation in the last few months than I'd ever wanted to know.
No, I'm glad, yeah. And part of the reason why, like, forward thinking is, at some point, do we want to add the actual video board to the stadium so that we don't have to rent it out every year, but also, you know, remove that risk of damaging the turf and track? And I did look up the price, it is about a quarter of a million dollars, that's all said and done. It's a redo electric, there's a whole different, all the wax to it. But, and that would be further down the line, but it doesn't need to forward think about.
Glad you looked up the price.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be delighted to go through the process with vendors on an annual basis for our visual at graduation, but it's pretty expensive.
Uh-huh. Any other questions or concerns regarding, regarding the MHS turf and the graduation process? All right, good. Michael, we needed you back here because I'm going to abstain from the vote of a transfer of funds that is going to go into the, excuse me, the yearbook student activities account, because my daughter's on the yearbook staff.
Oh, sorry.
So therefore you are back now. So, so do you have any questions or concerns, just from, again, they're going to transfer monies from a couple of accounts that have been dormant for the last few years?
Yep.
And put it into that account?
Here for it.
Okay, you were there.
Yep.
Excellent. So, looking for a motion to approve the transfer of the, the three different transfers. Actually, let's go, we'll go one by one, just to, actually, that typically, do we typically do it as one shot?
If the total isn't there, you should do it one by one.
Do it one by one, yeah. So, the first one, looking to have a motion for the transfer of the vending balance of one thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighteen cents to the yearbook student activities account. And that motion by Robin, second by Brendan, then all in favor. So that will be four in favor, and one I will abstain. The next transfer is for the full balance of two thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and forty cents from the global, sorry, global citizenship student activities account to the yearbook student activities account. Looking for a motion on that. Motion by Michael, second by Megan, all in favor, and that is four in favor, and one, and I will recuse myself. And then the last, third and last one is the transfer of the full balance of two thousand two hundred ninety dollars and seventy-five cents from the hospitality and tourism management student activities account to the yearbook student activities account. So, motion by Michael, second by Robin, in favor is four, and I will abstain.
One more, the annual.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you very much on that one.
Is this asking to do it every year or just this year?
Every year.
Sure.
Five hundred?
Yeah, that annual, it's not in here, right? I apologize.
It is. Finally, please accept this request to annually transfer thirty-five hundred.
Where am I at? Where am I missing it?
It's like the last paragraph.
It's after the bullet point, so the bullet points end, and then it's the next thing.
Yeah.
Doing the revise.
Mr. Wilson, I'm sure it's dated October seventeenth, is yours dated October tenth.
I remember the wrong one. So, Michael, can you read that for me?
Yeah. I'll just read it. Finally, please accept this request to annually transfer thirty-five hundred dollars from the Hawksnest student activities account to the yearbook student activities account. I need to transfer thirty-five hundred dollars to the Hawksnest student activity account to the yearbook student activities account.
Thank you. So, looking for a motion on that. Or that, what was your motion?
That was your motion.
Yeah, Michael's motion, second by Brendan, and then all in favor, that's four in favor, and I will, thank you. Yes, I have the October tenth one in front of me, that's why.
Thank you very much. I will.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
And just, Michael, the amounts that I gave, those had changed from the October tenth to the October seventeenth, so as I read them, okay? Want to make sure. Great, thank you. All right, then moving on to our transportation department update. Mr. Legore.
So our current transportation landscape for the district currently looks at in-town transportation. We are moving roughly around ninety-five kids with students, with four or five currently in flex in the moment. So I think within the next two weeks to thirty days, we're going to be looking at roughly about a hundred in-town students.
This is specialized transportation.
Specialty transportation, so, well, I guess a step back for our overall transportation for generalized yellow busing is around twenty-five hundred students on a daily basis. That's the Vendetti contract that is contracted out annually for a five-year contract term. For in-town transportation, again, we are looking at roughly around a hundred students transferred regularly on our vehicles. We have fifteen vehicles that transport that, and those are our in-town sped numbers that go to each one of our schools. Out of district at the moment, we are currently looking at around forty-two students that are currently being contracted and transported to various schools for outplacement. You have any questions? I'll open it up. Any questions about any particular area?
Just the last number you gave, are any of those like shared transportation, or is it like we have forty-two vehicles going out?
Individual rides? No, those are all, those are all utilized in group van, or I should say, group vehicle situations. There are some situations in that number where some students require a solo ride, you know, which obviously is allocated as such. So I think the largest constraint for us at the moment is probably in-town transportation. We didn't, we don't typically have a volume that we have, you know, at the moment. Last year, you could see it trending, you know, in that direction, and this year, just being shy of a hundred, we are stretching our, our in-district capabilities. With fifteen vehicles on the road, utilizing specialized transportation, we may have to look at some creative options. If we were to take on an additional twenty students at this point, we would be looking at additional equipment purchases in order to navigate that. I'm sure it's no secret that the current landscape for employment is very limited. Just a recent example that we saw, at the beginning of school for him was twenty bus drivers short before the beginning of the school year. So obviously, we don't face anything like that. I actually think we're very fortunate to have the providers that we have, even the new ones we brought on have been good. And the drivers that we have, we're very lucky to retain. With that being said, I think we might have to look at some creative opportunities for equipment purchases in order to expand the size and scope of the routes that we have with the same number of drivers and footprint that we have. So as you can imagine, it's very difficult to tell whether or not we're going to get an influx of new TRFs on a regular basis.
Can you say what a TRF is?
Yeah. Sorry, new influx of transportation request forms. However, we are seeing more, you know, as the student population and demographic for the town changes, we do see more of a high need impact. So it's really, for us, it's multiple touchpoints where we see more modified days, where we see more therapeutic carve-outs, and then just, in general, we just see more families. With the moratorium on evictions have been lifted recently, and the state of Massachusetts is actually in a, an official state of emergency for homeless. We are expecting and preparing to have an expanded breakout of that as well. So I'll pause there for any questions.
So of the hundred students in the district, roughly, that are needing specialized transportation within the district, do you have a sense of what the breakup is by age? And the reason I'm asking is if you're saying this is primarily elementary school, what that's telling me is, I don't want to predict anyone's future, but very likely, we're going to be providing specialized transportation in district or potentially out of district for that population for several years, so.
Yeah, actually, so I actually can break it out by age for you. I don't have that demographic or that metric available at the moment.
Yeah, I'd just be curious about that.
But I can break it out, particularly by age, by school, and kind of by demographic around town as well, to see where the populations are.
And especially by school, I think would be helpful for us, just thinking on and planning for the future, if we see there is a large population at elementary age, like I mentioned, that are likely going to need this moving forward. It's just good to be aware of that.
I mean, so even to piggyback off of that, it's, even when you look at standard yellow busing, like, we just see such an influx of students at the lower grades, and very much, we have a lot of utilization available at the high school level. I mean, I mean, obviously, it's a natural progression. A lot of kids walk, I don't know if you're familiar with our walk boundaries. So for the high school, it's if you live past two miles or further, you get a, you get a transportation. So within two miles, you're considered a walker. With Stacy, it's a mile and a half. Elementary schools, it's a mile, and then all kindergartners, obviously, are busts. So, yes.
And I have one more question, I'm sorry. And then, given the influx of students, if you will, do we still have the capacity on the really cold and icy days to pick up walkers, or are we unable to do that with?
It's somewhat limited. You know, we've done a little of that over the past. We, what we see on those days a lot of times is an increase in folks dropping their kids off of school.
Good, yeah.
And, you know, some, some families make the decision not to send their child to school too. We have picked up some kids, it's, even historically, it hasn't been a tremendous number of students over the years. We'll probably continue to make that offer. The other piece I want to just dial back to is, and this, just sort of the layers of complexity connected to transportation is, and you see this in the budget request too, because we've seen an influx in students who are engaged in our milestones classrooms. The majority of those students are some specialized transportation. So we're seeing like, you know, an influx in the number of teachers we're hiring in assistance, because we're seeing an influx in population that in turn is impacting, you know, the transportation needs, you know, both in-town and out-of-district. And, you know, sometimes that's hard to predict, because we think like we have the programs in place, and then we see, you know, we get the three-year-old kind of list, and we know that we start having a plan or a mission program. So I think that, you know, the short answer to your question is, I think that information is valuable, and we track that from a variety of angles. But the other piece to it is, it's also moving like the group, so if we have like a big group of, you know, students with a particular kind of disability that requires them to receive specialized transportation, sometimes there's a bubble, and sometimes it's just, you know, an indicator of a bigger population trend. And that's hard to tell, because every once in a while, we'll have like a couple of big years, and we're like, oh, gosh, this is the new normal, and then we'll have two or three years where we, you know, it dips below.
Jim, I'm sorry, could you just break out for the fifteen, how many are buses and the rest are vans, I'm assuming?
Yes, so we have nine vans.
Okay.
And then five buses. I'm sorry, six buses.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
My math sucks.
I was like.
Your math wasn't math.
It's all good, it's all good. Is it fair to say that those hundred students that we're taking care of the transport for would all be on IEPs? Is that correct?
All of them would need to be on IEPs that have specialized transportation.
Okay, so that is correct.
So whether or not, so then it becomes a question of like whether specialized transportation is assigned to the IEP.
And that happens as far as the team meeting process.
Yeah. And then so, just for example, like, I mean, and, you know, rightly so, we see, we are seeing a trend of students that are needing modified days. So we have a student that has specialized transportation to and from, but then they have a modified day where they might have to be picked up at eleven, you know, which just adds to the complexity of it, because we also have other things going on during the middle of the day, like a midday for Shining Star.
Yep.
You know, and other, other aspects of that.
Gotcha, that's really helpful, thank you. And then just thinking through the process of this, like, of all of what you just described, is it correct to say that Vendetti sort of owns the master scheduling for the twenty-five hundred students, like when the bus routes are released in the fall?
Yeah, it's really, that is their, that's their larger piece of the pie.
Yep.
So we contract that out, you know, Denise Marias is our connective point there.
Yep.
Who does a phenomenal job, and they manage the twenty-five buses that are out on a consistent basis.
Gotcha, and then under your sort of like day-to-day responsibility would be owning the hundred that you just kind of described, the nature of those transports, plus the forty-two out-of-districts?
Yes. Yeah, and well, not to mention that, I mean, so we can field anything off of the, off of the Vendetti issues as well.
And I'm sure if someone has a phone call, they're calling you, I totally get that.
But at least it's a team environment with that. But with the others, it's, yeah, it's generally like, so anything that occurs.
Got it.
On in-town sped is, you know, directly takes up cycles.
And the fifteen vehicles, we would then be staffing fifteen drivers, ideally, if not more, to do those routes. And then the out-of-district, it's just a contract service?
Those are contracted services. However, we would like to try to, we would like to try to develop a situation where we have capacity to move some of our vehicles out of district in a way to save.
Oh, interesting, okay, yep, that makes sense, okay. And then I was just curious, and maybe we were going to talk about this, did the switching of the times for our kind of twenty-five hundred population, did that alleviate any of what we were hoping?
That was really good. I think it's, you know, it's given us some leeway on both ways, you know, when we were able to put together a plan to make it work, specifically.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
And we're going to look at the winter too, to see.
Sure.
Because that's when really the busing kind of slows down.
Got it.
And then, you know, see if we may need to make like another, and I think anything we do would be like more of a tweak than a big shift.
Got it, okay.
We do see kind of a migration period in the, after the holidays of, you know, families outside of the country that come in. So we potentially can see an uptick in either MB or additional IEP requirements after January.
Do we have spacing, Jim, on any, is there any room, or is it sort of like we're at the tipping point for all?
It's limited, it's very limited.
I mean, my kid sits in, with three kids in a seat, so like, I get that we're putting as many.
Yeah, well, I should say, like, even standard busing is very limited right now.
Yeah.
At the lower levels, I mean, if you, like, so we always try to, we get, as you can imagine, we get, we field a lot of phone calls at the beginning of the year. Everybody wants a ride, which I totally get. I just, even just answering, I was just, I was just, this just happened to me the other day, like, I, we get families that call that, that don't qualify for a ride, and they're within the walk zone, and the father calls or the mother calls and says, my daughter or my son's too little to walk during the second or third grade, et cetera. And you're like, I'm sorry, that's the, you know, this is our policy. And then you see them out on, you know, you see them walking, and you can totally sympathize with that. So what we like to do is, we ask that they give us a sixty-day grace period after the first day of school, and sometimes the ridership shifts over that, over that time period, and seats open up. And if so, if they do, we do try to backfill those.
Got it.
Even with folks that are within the walk zone in order to try to accommodate some of those families.
Got it.
But as far as adding net new students on, it would be very challenging.
Okay.
From a in-town transportation perspective, like I, like specialized transportation.
Sure.
It's, it's probably razor-thin. One of the things that I, we were going to maybe kind of knock around, Denise and I were talking about, the concept of maybe getting a transit van to, you know, since we don't have additional driver footprint, try to get a little more like student capacity. Nothing crazy, but just being able to maybe expand even one or two routes would give us the ability to add more students to that, to those, to those areas. The only caveat to that is we obviously don't want to impact delivery time or drop-off time, so that'll impact time on learning, so it's an ongoing discussion.
Jim, one of the six buses is handicapped accessible, is that correct? Two of the buses are, and how about the vans?
The vans are not standard.
And is that sufficient right now in terms of accessibility? And is that sufficient right now in terms of accessibility?
Yes, we have enough wheelchair coverage right now. I think down the road, we should look at probably adding additional wheelchair. I will say that, you know, we are seeing those more and more, particularly at the Shining Star level.
Got it, okay, thanks. Thanks, Chris.
So actually going along with Meg's question, if one of those buses with a lift is out of service for a day, do we have a contingency plan?
The contingency plan is usually the contract through Vendetti.
Okay.
Fortunately, we haven't had that.
Okay.
But yes, that would be, that would be the backup plan.
Yeah, two questions. The first, just to clarify, the 60-day grace period, is that calendar days or is school days?
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't emphasize that because that's what we're able to do.
Cause it's just a, it's a. I was just curious.
I want to say like, we can only, there's usually like maybe a handful of cases where we're able to do that because the ridership is so high.
Understood.
So I, like, I would, I even hesitate to share that publicly because we, like, the capacity just isn't there.
Fair enough.
And we're kind of tied to those, those borders of the mile, the mile and a half, and the two miles. Because, you know, at the high school level, we do have flexibility, I will say that. Like, we probably have more, the most flexibility at the high school level because of, I think, a variety of factors, participation in extracurricular activities and the ability of kids to drive themselves and things like that. But I'd say, you know, pre-K through A, we're pretty budget. We're either very near capacity, in some cases slightly over capacity or right at capacity. And Jim and Denise do a nice job of shifting routes when, you know, one bus is a little higher. You'll see that, like, hey, you know, these two streets are shifting. Like, they do a lot of shifting throughout the year because the ridership does change a little bit too.
Got it. Yeah, then the second question.
That would be something I would, I would focus on.
No, I was just curious, so it's really my own.
That's my god.
No, no, it's fine. Another question, the walking route distance, is that standard, like, you know, standard among districts? Or are we, you know, a tighter radius, larger radius?
No, I mean, that's pretty standard.
That's pretty standard, okay, I was just curious.
And that policy's been in place since 2005. So, and it's, you know, I don't know if you could really change the restrictions on that because we don't have the capacity to handle what that would do for creating additional ridership.
Yeah, without, yeah, unfortunately. More transportation, yeah. I was just curious, yeah.
Well, that's fair.
Yeah, I'm still learning.
I'm not going to criticize that question.
You could.
Jim?
So.
I was gonna say, quick question going back to the, you know, the specialty transport and the vans, does that still require the driver to have a, like a certi-, special certification?
Yeah, we still, still require the 70 license.
Yeah. And then if we're looking for new drivers, do we, do we off that up, like, hey, we will train new drivers at, on our dime?
We offer, we pay for the entire process. And we advertise that too. And we have a situation where, you know, we just hired a new driver. But we didn't hire a new driver, we did put someone through 70 and will be hired. So, but the process is very, the process to become licensed is fairly simple. It's just finding applicants, that's the challenging piece.
So if you're watching from home and you're interested in driving a van.
Yes, yes, please.
We're a fantastic place to work.
Give us a follow-up. But yes, we try to take care of that for the press because we try to lower the barrier next year as much.
Right, exactly, yeah, no, that makes sense. And it sounds like, kind of just going back, so you're looking at the, the Vendetti ridership and it, and it can adjust, as Kevin just explained, it sounds like too. But, I mean, the number of routes that we have contracted pretty much stay, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to add on a route.
Yeah.
But if, if a bus is completely empty leaving the high school, it's not like we can really get rid of that because of the contract. But we can kind of, we do.
I just have a cap for that, I don't think we can take away.
No, because we bid it that way.
Well, the other issue too is.
Just curious, yeah.
Yeah, the other issue too is a two-tiered route, so even if we were to blow at the high school.
Right, that's why, yeah, I wasn't sure if it's, if we had that level of flexibility or not, it was just more of a.
I mean, honestly, we don't have, we really don't have, I would, I'd be hesitant to remove anything.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm sure if we had to add additional capacity, we could.
Yeah, yeah, understandable. And then, how's our usage on the, in our town owned, our school owned buses, like how are we doing with that?
Those vehicles are used both afternoon, midday, and morning. And when they're not being utilized by our staff for transport, they're utilized to facilitate the vocational programs here for the bistro and the coffee center. So they're, they're, the time slot where, I mean, it's almost like a one-to-one handoff as the vans are coming back with the bistro and the coffee center actually grabbing keys and heading out with them.
Okay.
We're actually in situations where we, Nate and I have now made a schedule and, you know, the timings are so tight on that, that we now have a schedule of who has what vans and when, so that we can ensure that we have delivery for mornings, midday, and afternoons.
Yeah, but the, like, the 40-passenger buses, are we able to utilize those for like our, you know, sports program?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So 28, Matt and Deb drive, and Laura, so 25, 28, and 30 are driving sports trips all the time.
Awesome, good to hear.
Yeah, even Adalia is driving, some of our special needs students are participating in athletics.
And did it ever work out, I know we were trying to have some of our coaches be bus certified, did that ever get any traction?
We offered that several times and if they're watching, the offer's still open. And by the way, just to double back on that, we'll pay for a CDL too.
Right, yeah.
And, but we didn't get any takers.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious how that, how that was and whether, you know, is it pushing back on Pete again?
But he didn't do it.
Just because again, if that, the buses are there.
Yep.
And, and you're struggling to get a bus driver to bring a sports team, you know, to a, to one of our, you know, hock-a-mock, you know, opponents, right? But the coach has the ability to get behind the wheel.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a win-win, so.
Yeah, certainly, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're not going to give up on that one, but yeah, that, that would help.
And if I could emphasize something just for folks watching at home who aren't, you know, is well-versed in transportation, that transportation is a universal issue across schools, across the United States. And I think we're doing significantly better here in Milford because we have, you know, drivers for a vehicle. We have a provider that makes sure that all the drivers are staffed. And, you know, I think if you watch the news, you see horror stories almost every week about, you know, a district that can't bring their kids to school because they don't have drivers. And that's, you know, never been the case. Like, you know, kudos to Vendetti, kudos to Jim. But we've got to continue to be creative because I think places like Amazon are hiring a lot of drivers and it's really limiting the pool. And, you know, if anybody has ideas for recruitment sources or, you know, anything creative like that, we're all ears. Because, you know, I'm going to any career fair I can where there's folks that are interested in working and trying to pitch them on being a driver for us, being an assistant for us, thinking about a career in education. Because it's, it's going to hit crisis level at some point. It's, it's already hit it in huge, upon us. I, I think we've been strategic and thoughtful about how we do it, but, you know, national trends are, we're not going to be into national trends.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions? Actually, one, the new apartments that have come online and are proposed to come online, how was that impacted and are we able to handle that?
200 Deer Street, and yes, but I'll be honest with you, it's, you know, it probably took up about 80%, of the capacity on the vehicle that goes down there. And it's a full 70-word capacity of them.
So we're, yeah, so we're seeing, we're seeing impact, transportation impact.
It's well above the 14 and 15 kids we were fronting.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not overwhelming, but it is, it's, it's doable, but you definitely see the impact from it.
It's impact, it hasn't, hasn't created the need for an additional bus loop for that or put in service, but it's increased your capacity.
I mean, so that's the 200 Deer Street location.
Yeah.
And then when you look at the Grizzly and Brown Bear and Kodiak locations up off of Hoth and Roland, you could potentially see the same thing for that downstream. At the moment though, it doesn't seem like it's going to be an immediate impact and we're able to facilitate what we have now. So, you know, I mean, next year could be a different discussion.
Right, okay.
And just from a population perspective, to add to that, we were, last year we were flat, which is fantastic. Who knows what this year's going to bring? It's always difficult to tell until, you know, because right now we're figuring out who hasn't shown up, you know, who's moved out. And it's, it seems like it's been about even, I'm not hearing, I'm hearing the FRC is busy, but I think it's, the ins and outs are pretty close right now. So, so more analysis will come later in the year on that.
And what, and of the five-year contract, what year are we at?
I believe we're at year four, so we get the rollover year?
We're finishing up year three, so rollover is 24, 25. And I just finished putting that all together in the data and cost per day for area districts. So we'll have that, maybe the first or second meeting in November.
Any other questions regarding transportation? I see, so thank you for that portion of it. Move on to the community use side.
Bring up the better-looking room, let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Burns, for joining us. So yeah, just put, put community use just on our agenda, just try to have them check in with us, see what's going on and.
How are you? How is everybody?
That's fabulous.
Better now.
Good to see it.
Good.
Better now.
So we're in full community use mode. Extended day is going. We have, at this point in time in the fall, we have 11 kids programs running. We have seven adult programs running for the fall. And then we have some winter programs already established. Travel basketball just started, so that's new. That's the one winter program technically falls under the winter because that's when the season is running now. The extended day numbers from last, last school year were 201 kids in the extended day program. This year is 223. And there is a waitlist for Woodland for the afternoon program. The morning program, we like to take 30 kids per school in mornings and the afternoon max out at 60. So we're right, we're right there. I mean, Memorial is the lowest out of it with a combined 54 students. I think that has something to do with where Memorial's located. There's a lot of walking to school and whatnot. So I think that's a lot easier for where Memorial's located compared to where Woodland is, where there's the highest, which is 89 students. So far this year, in fall programs, we've had 369 kids sign up for the amount of programs that we've had. And for the adult, we've had 419. That ranges from the pool to, we had a college essay class for kids. We had, last night we had an estate planning class. So just plenty of things going on.
You guys still doing stiff man yoga?
Stiff man yoga is one of the most popular ones we have, yes. Yep, 20 staple, 20, 20 adults, they do it at Memorial Hall, they love it, so.
Well, thank you, no, it sounds like that things are moving forward and in the world.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think that's kind of where I was hoping to see and hoping to hear.
Yeah.
So we appreciate that part of the update. Open it up to questions in regards to community use or what they have going on. Rob?
So that's great to hear about what is going on. So I guess my question is twofold. One, are you trying to grow additional programs? And two, is there a mechanism if somebody in the community wanted to do a program through community use that they could reach out to to see if that would be a viable option?
Yeah, so we had sent out an email to Milford Public School employees probably maybe a month ago, maybe the beginning of the school year, asking them for ideas regarding programs. And we actually have a couple that we may run. It's just a matter of finding someone to run the program. So we do have a ton of ideas, it's just a matter of someone who will, you know, run a program. There was one person that suggested a babysitting program. We do a ton of CPR programs, so if, you know, you can get certified CPR. But yeah, we, we reach out that way to the Milford Public Schools and ask the teachers and staff if they have ideas. Yeah. In our meetings that we have, community use board, the meetings that we have in public, so anybody's welcome to come in, give their opinion or suggest ideas.
We, we do have quite a few people from the community do reach out with ideas. We just had a mindfulness class and some folks come up with ideas that we can accommodate and some are a little outside of our scope of liability. However, there is definitely an open door policy to that. And all of the policies are, all of the initial asks are reviewed to see if it's something that we can actually facilitate. And if we do, we tend to move forward with it. So it is, it is very much encouraged for people to reach out.
Other questions?
Thanks, Chris, for the update, I really appreciate it. Is any or a lot of the program grant funded? I'm thinking of like the free STEM clinics over the summer, they're like tremendous. So I'm just curious if that's something that we're either taking advantage of or want to think about taking advantage of?
Well, you got a grant this summer that provided activities, food guard summer camp.
Got it.
That we had, that we run here for community use, we haven't, as far as I know, we haven't had anything.
Gotcha. It might be neat to explore a couple where they are free. I mean, what a tremendous, like, to be able to offer to the community that we know has a need potentially in the future. And then as a new beneficiary of extended days, just such a fantastic program. Are those numbers limited by staff, by spacing, just everything?
I think staff to a point.
Yep, makes sense.
I mean, ideally, obviously, we'd like to take as many people as we can.
Sure.
Right, because there's definitely a need for it with the waiting list that we have at Woodland in the afternoon. But I think it's both, I think it's staff and space. Memorial's tight.
Yep.
Woodland is probably, you have the most room out there, right? And then Brookside is tight as well.
Yeah.
It's just a smaller scope there at each of those schools.
That's great.
There's only so much that you can do, especially when the winter comes.
Yep, excellent.
Yeah.
And then how do we conclude with the summer programming? I don't even know, you were like maybe just stepping into the role, but overall.
Summer Cape was good, much better.
Yeah, okay, great.
And I think we found that we were, I think there was some sort of concern between us.
Sure.
The department saying that, you know, the numbers weren't there.
Mm-hmm.
But then it seems to be like the first week goes through.
Yep.
And then everybody just starts, I think they, they realize that, oh my God, we need some for our kids to do next week.
Absolutely.
Right, or someone will come the first week and not sign up for the additional weeks and then realize that they had a great time and then continue going forward.
That's great.
Yeah.
Cause I know the pandemic obviously had a huge impact on that, right? Like everyone's life changed in terms of their tradition, so it's great to hear it's coming back.
Well, I think the pandemic still is affecting us because I think there's a lot more people now that work from home. So whereas the extended day, you may not need it anymore because, you know, you can get off the bus and there's mom or dad or someone there that's going to get your child. Whereas before, everybody had to go to the office or whatever. Now with so many work from home, I think that's a, that's a different option for everybody.
Yeah, we're hoping for more return to office.
It's happening. Based on the traffic on the Mass Point, I can tell you it's happening.
Chris is right, you see it ramp up, you know, slowly. And then people come and they have, like, even people that aren't like, you know, that don't pay for the whole summer all at once. And they go week by week, and they try it once and they like it, they come back, and they come back, and they come back.
Is this something you've thought about exploring though for future years? Like some sort of flexibility, be it three days a week or half-days or?
We have, yeah. I think from what I researched previously, I think there was a point in time where there might have been, you know, you come for a day here or a day, day there. We just joined a group that is, has the parks and recs and other communities around
Sure.
Milford that we joined.
Oh, neat.
That gives us ideas and we kind of run through and they, they have ideas as to how they run their programs, you know, so we could feed off of them and say, well, this is how we do a one, two, or three-day
Sure.
program during the reaper, or one day. So that's something that I want to look into because I think there's a need for that too. What I don't want to have happen is, and I think that we discussed this as well, is all of a sudden you just have somebody show up the day of and say,
Yeah.
can you take them?
Totally.
That's, that's hard because we have to staff properly in order to have the, the right staff there for the kids.
For sure, I know the kids' needs, to the extent the child has, right, absolutely, that makes sense. Okay, thanks, Chris, thanks.
Any other questions regarding community use and programs? Again, thank you very much, appreciate you coming in, giving us the update, appreciate the transportation side. Thank you for both before this, we had policy, so we've been here for a couple hours, so we appreciate your involvement tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Chris.
You regret saying that.
All right, then, moving on for our report from our superintendent.
So I've got two quick updates for the community, the committee and the community this evening. Actually, a lot of good news, so that's always a good thing. So the Brookside Elementary School addition was completed last week and students and teachers were in their classrooms starting this Monday. I cannot tell you, and Chris was there Monday, and he can probably share this as well, how happy and excited the teachers and students were to start in their classrooms. We held a ribbon-cutting ceremony Monday morning prior to the start of the school day. There's still a few minor things that need to be completed, but the new wing of the building is open and occupied. I want to thank the community for their support of this much needed project, the select board for their support, the finance committee, the school committee, particularly Chris, John, and Matt for joining the project during the last few months as we move towards completion. Carlos Peña and his team worked directly with the contractors to ensure the project was completed to our satisfaction. And I also want to thank Nancy and Delaney and Kevin Cullen for all their work around technology needs connected to the project. The final product will meet the needs of our students and staff. And I think the, it really came out really, really nice and kind of schematically kind of fits in with the building. Couldn't be happier with that. And the kind of scheme is going to fit in with the building. Couldn't be happier with the outcome. So, maybe you have any questions about project?
Yeah, that'd be easier. Yeah, definitely. Any questions on the Brookside project? Just one. Did we go through and have we done our punch list walkthrough with them?
We're still kind of, we're still kind of going through that.
Okay, so we're still, in a sense, we can, the space, I know, can be occupied, but there's still some little items to be addressed overall.
So, we do have the third full payment that we have not processed. And I spoke with Kevin a little bit about how we're going to handle that this week because essentially they have completed from their end. So, I thought what I would do is leave about fifty thousand dollars on the table for the punch list and process the balance. And we'll hold that fifty for any issues that might arise and then process the fifty in the next warrant when we're happy.
Did the contract have a five percent retainage before that or not?
We didn't necessarily have that writing in our bid scope when we went out in the winter. So, we're working together with Ares and saying, okay, this is what our payment schedule would be. And we release funds at steps through steps. So, that's what I would like to do on the next warrant is release everything up to the fifty thousand dollars and hold that as our retainage for the punch list.
And again, it looks like we're very close, but I want Carlos and his team to go through what it might be.
Exactly. So, they're doing continuous, in a sense, walkthroughs and creating that punch list and ensuring that things are being checked out.
There's a couple things we know need to be finished that are minor things that we can occupy while they're being done.
And my concern is that even though I'm processing a warrant, by the time it goes through all of the town hall steps, they're really not getting that checked for two weeks. So, I don't want to hold back too many funds where they are almost complete.
Yeah, and just to add on to what Kevin said, yeah, the staff that I spoke with that day, you know, were just all smiles, very, very happy, you know. As I said to them, it's like the building had the new car smell to it, right? So, there's, you know, clean and bright. I was very impressed to see over that last week how much progress was made in the setup of the classrooms as far as, you know, getting in, you know, the electronics, you know, as far as from the visual side to the cubbies to just, you know, the colorful decorations in throughout. So, I think, you know, the teachers, the staff worked very hard to prepare their rooms for students on that Monday morning. So, kudos to them too.
Yes. How much is owed on the last invoice?
Well, right now we owe approximately, just under three hundred thousand, so I'll process the difference between that and the fifty.
Yes.
That's excluding the five hundred K that we just signed.
Correct.
I think so. That's the last one that's remaining. And then are there warrants, are there warrants? Is there a warranty like on the unit themselves, certain components? Like, is there any?
It's one year.
It's one year, yes.
In like sort of entire?
Which I guess is standard.
Got it.
Pretty much, yeah. Have a.
Industry property.
Yes, Michael. Playing devil's advocate, why wouldn't we just hold the last invoice until the punch list is done?
Well, I've been holding that particular amount of money for almost six weeks, so I feel like we have to pay some of that.
I don't feel anything. Personally.
Sounds like they invoiced you early.
What?
Sounds like they invoiced us.
Yeah, right. That's my, I.
Standard construction brat.
Yeah. That seems like, yeah, that was pretty aggressive on their invoicing. I mean, good for them. Personally, I think we should hold.
More than fifty?
I'm pretty confident that, like, the issues right now are very minimal.
And the building is now occupied, so they're, we do have the keys and we owe three hundred thousand, so.
But have they finished all the work, right?
Well, that's.
What will motivate them to finish? The amount's not as important to me. It's fifty grand motivating to them or is withholding three hundred grand motivating to them? I don't know.
Well, we're not processing anything for another week. So, we were going to reach out to Carlos on Tuesday and discuss what possibly, if there are any large items of concern, obviously, that number could change, but so more to follow. But that's what I would like to do is like two fifty, an old fifty.
I haven't seen this.
But if something comes forward, a leak in the roof or something, we can't hold it indefinitely, you know, through the one year warrant.
No, 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 no. I'm not saying indefinitely, but I'm sure there's a final sign off, right? With like a punch list, say, hey, we are now done.
Yeah, and they've submitted that. That's what I've been kind of, and to your point, I felt it was premature. We had no schedule of payment in our bid, so I just held it.
Usually you submit final payment when you sign off on the final, right? Am I wrong, Chris?
Well, I think we've done that by allowing the students in.
Yeah, there's some terms substantially complete, but then they knew that we were still going to have to go through punch list items. So, the substantially completing phase allowed us to, for the building commissioner to go in and give the permit to occupy, so that part of it. But then there was that known kind of statement of there will be punch list items to address.
So, you've seen it. What do you think?
As far as the overall scope of the project?
Do you think we should do the punch list and pay or do we?
Yeah, well, that's why I said something about five percent, you know, of the overall scope. So, was there a percentage written in the contract? And that's why I asked. It doesn't sound like there was. I guess I could throw out a number like that, like, you know, construction wise, it's usually up to ten percent. So, that's why I threw down five percent, just as it's something small of the overall scope. And it keeps that company motivated to come back and to finish up that punch list and to make sure that, you know, punch lists are done and ads, bill drawings are submitted and things of that nature. So, you know, it's all those final details within the contract to ensure, like you said, that things are done to the same, to the satisfactory level of us, the customer. I would recommend five percent.
So, that's about eighty thousand.
See, that's the difference.
And it's just, again, it's a number from my head, that's all.
Yep.
Percentage standpoint, but even at fifty, it doesn't change.
Yeah, and this isn't like no negative on anything. It's more, you know, motivating a company to make sure they finish their stuff, right?
Sure.
So, once we send that final payment, that is, we are now saying, you are done. So, they're not going to come back.
No, and they've been very good. They've paid all the furniture storage charges, which, you know, were additional costs. They've offered and paid all of that, so they've been good.
And they were responsive to even some last minute requests we made based on like the initial walkthrough. You know, I don't think they were unreasonable requests, but they weren't necessarily an initial scope of the work. To be fair.
Thank you.
And tonight's warrant has one of their.
It's, that's.
That's the previous payment.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Oh, okay, so payment one or payment two?
So, last week when we voted our, or last meeting when we voted our warrant, some of the warrants weren't signed.
Oh, okay.
So, tonight's warrant does not include the Ares. That's from last meeting.
Just to be signed.
Just to be clear.
Understand. All right. And that was the first of the three payments that needs to be signed off tonight?
That's the second.
Second payment, sorry.
Correct. From last meeting that didn't get signed erroneously.
No problem. All right. Any other questions on the Brookside, or Brookside addition? See you in a few minutes.
All right. Milford Track and Field Project was completed today. The final, the lining of the track was completed. We're letting it dry tomorrow and then Saturday morning we're back in business, fully back in business. So, it's, you know, hosting home games and, you know, other groups. We're going to be just business as usual come Saturday. I can't tell you how pleased I am with the outcome of this project. The positive feedback we've received on the turf field has been overwhelming. Again, I appreciate everyone's patience and flexibility as we work through the project during the fall season. I want to thank Peter and Kathy for the problem solving, finding alternative locations for teams to practice at those games. And again, I think that the groups that we've worked with, both on the turf and the track, were very responsive to us. They were flexible. If we were able to get a few games, and I think it was last weekend, because it was a break at the time, we could actually walk on the track. Get it cured enough to walk on the track. So, they've been very good to work with. So, happy to answer any questions, people.
Just one. What color is it?
Black.
Black.
The heat, all was resolved and all those questions?
Yeah, yeah. So, it's, it's black with white lining. There's some yellow and the numbers are red for the lanes. We had to keep the lining white based on competitive consistency because the lining is white consistently tracks. It's funny, the day after we had that conversation, my son had a home game at Westford Academy and the track was black. It was just like, just like a random thing. And it was an older, it's an older facility. But that's, you know, and the guy who installed, I think I was mentioning this to folks before the meeting, is one of, I think, ten to twelve certified MCA track liners in the country. And so, like Pete's an expert on track and field and he was telling Pete stuff. It was like, he was like, oh wow, that's really, you know, interesting why you think this particular boat. So, I think we got one of the best installers in the country to put the lines in.
And was that costing you for all that change?
That cost, and last I knew it was around six thousand dollars for the change. And then that was based on a cost to remove the current materials and bring in the new materials.
And the final one? Any other questions on the track? The final one, the light project for the softball field, right now we're being told it's going to be on October thirtieth. Unfortunately, the weather has delayed other jobs in the state and has kind of backed up the installation team. They're telling us they'll be here October thirtieth. It's a two to four weekend stop. And the reason, the reason they give that is I think it's weather, but also sometimes they get into a project and it takes a little time because there's something that's unforeseen. So, by the end of November, ideally, the light project will be done. That's less seasonal time sensitive than the other ones were. But, you know, I'll keep you posted on that one as it kind of develops. And happy to answer questions on that too.
Any questions on the softball field?
If that does get to lead, does the dropping, with the dropping temperature, if, say, it goes into December, would that impact it at all or?
I'm not sure. I think the ground frozen, it could cause some problems, but I'm not certain.
Okay.
It seems less of an issue than like the track installation, which is a little more weather and temperature dependent.
Did we include a sound system with the light project at all or no?
No.
Okay.
I'm aware of no.
No.
Just curious. I know. I was just like, man, that would have been smart.
You volunteering to sing the national anthem or?
No. I can play a recording of Whitney Houston during that.
Yeah, that's good. That might be the best one.
That's the best one, by far.
All right, so that's something to consider.
Yeah.
You can add it to your Jumbotron.
Hey, Jumbotron's a good idea.
Brendan might beat you for spending money, Greg.
Maybe.
I don't get any bread out of this game.
With the challenge, like, I don't feel thrown down. Update on the job fair. We continue to be aggressive in our recruiting. We attended two job fairs in the fall with mass hire. One at Polar Park in Worcester. The second one here at the Milford Youth Center was gracious enough to host one. Based on the candidates we met and the interest we received, we'll continue to attend these fairs in the future. The Polar Park one, there was a ton of people at. And the Milford one was very well attended. It was a much smaller engagement. Typically, we go to education focused ones, and these are just general business fairs. But I think it's worthwhile because like I forward to someone who's interested in being a driver at a gym, you know. Who knows if it's going to pan out or not, but I think it's just good to have that exposure. Over the summer, we hosted two job fairs at Milford High School and one in the community. These fairs led to a number of hires across the district. We plan on hosting another fair in November, either at one of our schools or with a community partner downtown just for accessibility for folks. We're trying to like find the sweet spot of how to space these out because like we don't have them too frequently because then people stop showing up for them, but we don't want to space them out too far because we have constant needs, particularly around assistants and drivers.
How many physicians are currently open about, Kevin?
Ah, you know off the top of my.
Five thirty?
Probably about twenty TAs. It's just a constant posting.
And a lot of that is just from, just in turnover.
Okay, thanks.
And that's, myself. Any other questions?
Any questions on the job fair side of it? Not seeing any. So, all right. Thank you for those updates. Appreciate it. Moving on then to our assistant superintendent for business and human resources, Mrs. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have for the committee's approval this evening, eight warrants in the amount of nine hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Motion to approve the warrant. Motion by Megan, second by Robin, all in favor, and that is unanimous.
Committee has our twenty-four budget update for your information. Nothing to report in October, which is good. Committee also has a list of the latest appointments from our previous meeting. And we do not have gifts, but we do have grants, I believe.
Can you explain to me maybe a little bit? I've got a cover sheet that says our approved grants. So, I'm assuming these are ones that we've already voted on?
Correct, and we're going, so the only one there is October.
Okay.
If you go back.
Is the, yep, okay. So, this was, yeah, so the civics, teaching and learning, all right, and that should have, does I have an attachment in here?
For the total? I think it's on the cover.
Okay, yes. So, I see one, yeah. So, eighteen thousand, ten thousand. Okay, yes.
It's not on the cover page, Chris?
It is. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Yep, because, well.
I want to have that in front for you.
You had, there was multiple supporting documents and some were zero and some were, one was eighteen, one was ten.
Exactly.
So, that's why I wasn't sure.
Sorry.
That's why I was asking for the clarity. All right, so looking for a motion to approve the civics, teaching and learning grant in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars. Motion by Robin, second by Brendan, and then all in favor, and that is unanimous.
Great.
Can I just ask what grades that's targeted at?
High school.
High school programs?
Is that?
High school.
Oh, it's high school, okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay. And then, so. All right, subcommittee updates? Go ahead, Robin.
I can update for policy. So, the policy subcommittee met tonight and we had the director and assistant director of community use in attendance. And we reviewed a policy for basically signing or appointing members to the community use board that Michael had drafted. And so, at this point, Michael's going to take our feedback and look at the edits that we suggested, bring it back to the subcommittee, and then we'll bring it to a first read for the full committee once it's in a form that is ready to be printed.
Thank you for that. Anything else on subcommittee, any other members?
Did we report on the facilities, one of them?
I believe we did. And I think if anything, facilities, we.
I think we did. You're right. We did. You did. I talked about that one.
And if not, it was basically we talked about just kind of the assessment of all of our school buildings, right? We're just going through and having something probably in the next four to five months on that. So, Dr. McIntyre and Carlos will look at all of our school buildings and report back to us.
And we're using the two thousand eight, yes, Nezdem, Nezdem because I'm ahead of the road. And Nezdem reported when they did the best facilities we've studied at Bateson. And obviously, there's been a fair amount of work done in the last five years at the classroom and these projects and sites.
Michael?
Kind of a, it's not really a subcommittee update, Milford TV update. I actually have to step down off that board. My, I have a new job. So, it requires me to go in Boston three days a week, Monday through Wednesday. And they usually meet either on Wednesdays, and I just can't get back in time. And then obviously Thursdays I'm here. So, I notified them yesterday. We told them that Chris and I will start to look for a person to appoint. So, if you guys have anybody who want to do it, let us know. Second Wednesday of the month.
Second Wednesday of the month. So, if anybody is interested in that, please let me know. Or if you have someone in mind that might be interested that can represent the school committee, please let me know on that too.
It does not have to be a school committee member.
And then I also attended the wellness committee on Tuesday, and this was by the director of nursing. So, actually some really good information to bring along to the committee. The school department is going to take over the vaccination program from Board Health. So, Board Health is just, you know, had a hard time with that distribution. Obviously, it's more of our student population that requires that vaccine and would benefit from the vaccine program. So, our new director of nursing is going to go through that process and bring that in-house. You know, obviously, there's some training involved in that. It's a two to three month process to get things up and running. The clinics will most likely be down at the FRC and it will be appointment driven. Again, part of the training is the registration program itself. The Kennedy Center would also be staying involved with us and our community because they had been beneficial to the community too. But just been, again, they're, they're just, the capacity doesn't, or the need in their capacity are just, the need outweighs the capacity that they have. And the only special purchase is a. that they have. And the only special purchase is a, is a specialized refrigerator needed to store the medications and vaccinations and about, about $1,000. So not a huge, huge ask. And I think, again, the benefit to our school program is going to be, be extremely beneficial overall. So we'll have, when that program starts to move forward, certainly we'll have our director of nursing, Ms. Dula, come in on that for more questions.
I have a big recollection that either we bought the fridge to begin with, or the town hall would have a fridge. Why don't we just get that fridge? No?
There was a break, there's the, the fridge failed, the town hall. I'm not sure why. Look at the details of that, and that's why we're buying it.
Got it. I just recall there being a.
That's 100% correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then also the medical awareness policy, which was last updated in 2016. They'll, they'll start that process in moving forward. So again, that'll be presented to school committee through our, our policy, and then we'll go through the first and second read. So, so policy has a lot of work going on, yeah. But again, we'll, and once the program gets to that point where it's starting to go and get up and running, we'll, we'll bring in our director and, and have her present and ask her questions. All right. Any future agenda items at all? All right, not seeing a few that we'll, we'll work on.
We're still, we're still backlogged a little bit.
Yeah, exactly. Yep, a little bit. I know someone was asking, fifth grade schedule. There's only one. What was the, so there's a new fifth grade schedule. Are you just looking for some background?
Or no, we know, because it was presented by, just kind of how it's going with the ELA.
Okay.
Because, yeah, it was a shift. So now instead of having the separate ELA and social days, yeah, just an update about how it's going with those teams, yeah.
We're bringing, we're going to do math MCAS next meeting. We're going to do ELA MCAS the meeting after that and bringing the math director, literacy director. So that, if we do that, that'll probably push us out to end of November, beginning of December, which actually might be good because we'll get a, we'll get the first term in.
Yeah, and see how it went.
Yeah.
So I'm going to tentatively put it down for first reading in December, if that works for people.
Anything on, you have future agenda? Not seen anything? Good. Very good. We originally were scheduled to go into executive session due to some absences of a couple of our board members. We're going, we've rescheduled that executive session, so we'll just move